Oh, was it?
I think it is. I missed.
Are you probably...
I'm not sure if that lights on. You look like a poet.
Yeah, no. Sometimes, you know, who wants to go and get a basketball?
Sure.
All right, so I'll go to order the number three, uh, nominee count, school one meeting, and most other things.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, any agenda adjustments?
I do not.
Any nominations, ready nominations or timing?
We don't have any at this point.
All right, um, so, uh, any public comments this evening? Okay, so, um, if we want, we can move right into the TMS update first, if that works, since we've had some release in here from TMS.
Thank you, it works for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us. Uh, it's great to be here. This is our first venture into New Hampshire, and we're learning new differences from some of the other states we've worked in. We've worked in, you know, Massachusetts and Rhode Island and Connecticut quite a bit. Um, I put a few things together that you might have seen, some of the laws and accounting standards and things like that, we sent out to you, so, uh, trying to, trying to learn all that. And, uh, just a little bit on myself, I, I grew up in Massachusetts, worked in Massachusetts, uh, started teaching as a music teacher for twelve years, instrumental music, pretty much, became a school business manager for five years, and then a superintendent for over twenty years. I retired a while back, uh, worked for a school accountability group, doing, you know, accountability reviews across the country and a lot of the ones in Massachusetts. Then I started my own little business that got picked up, it was a data business by a group down in Florida, uh, called Addus, and I was their director of accountability and academics for a while. And then I started, uh, helping entrepreneurs with ed tech to get into schools, and that's tough because none of them have money and they all want to sell a product that isn't ready to be sold. So, uh, here I, I then was sitting in my lounge chair a little too much, and my wife decided, okay, get out, go find work. So, um, I've been doing this now for about three years, and I love school finance, so, uh, married, my wife, forty-four years, no dog, the dog died, six grandchildren, two kids, uh, no, five grandchildren, I think there's another one assumed to be there. And, uh, on with we go. So, um, not to, not to belabor the point, but there's, there's a lot of differences in terms of, um, the way things should be set up here and what, what I've come upon. Uh, it's only been a month, we found as much as we possibly can, I'm going to show you a few things on a, on a screen on this little different kind of report, but, um, I want to let you know, I mean, obviously, from what I've heard, the Clermont experience here in New Hampshire has, uh, scared a lot of folks, um, those kinds of things have happened in, um, Massachusetts as well. I was actually known for my school finance, because I had been a business manager before, and went into a district where they actually were under a state finance control before. And it was quite interesting to, they had a state legislature that we could borrow all kinds of money, and I walked in the door and I said, where's your staff da- database? Huh? I mean, eighty percent of the budget is staff. Once we got everything sorted out, they had more money than they knew what to do with. And they had lost all control of, uh, revolving accounts, athletic fees, bus fees, you know, all the new things that are coming in, grants, we had, you know, some federal grants, some state grants, and by the time we ended, we actually had to expend a million dollars, and I put a million dollars into their E and D account, their savings account, as we call it in Massachusetts, um, and we never, never had to, never wanted to borrow anything. The legislature was, the legislation was dismissed, and we went on happily for a long time. So, from that job, from my other years in superintendent, and from now working for three years in multiple different places, typically we go into places that are having some issues and, and, you know, we're trying to clean them up. We've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. They're not ugly. They're good. Yeah, there's some things that be crooked, and we're going to get to, to be really, you know, going well. So, what I want to try to explain tonight, just fairly quickly, is that we have not, we've not come in blind, and we've already put some things in place that I think will start to set the culture of a way of responsibility, and, you know, we have to pay a funding source for any expenditure that is made. One simple thing that we've done is, we've said no reimbursements. No, reimbursements in most places are not allowed, all right? And apparently they were here. In an emergency situation, we have to honor them, and we have to find a way to, to take care of things. And they've had some over the summer, because this is new, so obviously you have to respect what's been done along the way up until, you know, we come in now. But going forward, we're limiting those to, to emergencies. It hasn't been necessarily common practice to do transfers among budgets, but part of where you start to lose some of that control and understanding of your budget is by not tracking it in some way. So, we will be tracking that in encumbrances with POs for the district that says, you know, this money is going to this account, you can't spend it. So, it's not a real PO, but it's just a way of monitoring and encumbering funds, so we know it can't be spent for, for other things. No PO will go out without the funding source, without an approved PO from our office. Um, we're going to be giving you, you've seen a couple beginning monthly reports, we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight, but we also can do that in detail level for the schools, for the departments, for special ed, for curriculum areas, for whatever we need, where you could see every single PO, you could see every single encumbrance, make sure that it went to the right account, check all that, because those have been some of the issues that haven't been followed through. Um, the other, um, thing that I've found is that many accounts are not only inactive, that have been termed inactive, but they're all zero. You know, there's, there's nothing in them, and there hasn't been for a long time. When I looked at the, the budget book, I'm talking from my speaker here, but when I looked at your budget book and saw, you know, um, three hundred and twenty pages, double sided, that's a lot of pages for, for the budget of this size and school of this size. But when you look through, it's largely a lot of the Munis reports that are printed that have a lot of those zero accounts in them. And, you know, the folks in communities typically have difficulty reading those kinds of reports. It's not something you all, I'm not saying everybody, but you don't see them every day, you have to be orientated to them. So, we're trying to clean up some of the accounts, make it simpler, make it more streamlined, not to lose any of the detail that you want or need, but to simply, you know, make it more manageable, because when we have so many accounts and you have ten accounts for FICA, for payroll, you know, ten accounts for building and repairs, for maintenance and repairs, you know, you're only going to use one, two of those, and you don't want to lose anything that is important for audit or for state reporting, but it's easy to make transpositions when you're, you know, doing something that Kathy, Kathy is wonderful, Laurie, the newer admin, admin is wonderful, but when you're looking through all those numbers and just looking at this big long line, never mind even trying to write it or see where you're going, those are mistakes that you don't need, and you don't need to be impacted by this long list for, that's meaningless, that has all fens and zeros. So, those are some of the things that we're starting to take a look at, many other kinds of things, but I wanted to give you a, a brief overview of, you know, how we're starting to get into the work. The other main thing, I had a meeting today with these two fine ladies, um, the grants have been, um, difficult for them to manage, and the way they write grants in, um, in New Hampshire is, you probably all know this, so I'm sorry, but they have activities, and each activity has a number, and it seemed as if every, um, time, if something was asked to have a PO to be able to buy something or have a professional development or something, that a new line was created for that activity. And I'm like, fine, ooh, you know, again, you know, a hundred and thirty lines, and some of them from three years ago, four years ago. So, what we talked about today, and I think it'll work, we, we want to try it, is that, you know, the grants come in, you have your IDA, your title one, your title two, your title four, and all of those activities fit into certain kinds of categories, we came up with seven categories, professional salaries, support salaries, indirect costs, supplies and materials, furniture and expen- and, uh, equipment, and missing, uh, professional development, maybe missing one. So, we're going to have those, they will tell me how much to put in those accounts, and we will monitor those accounts. That means that when they want to buy a new book for a classroom or for, or a new piece of equipment for somewhere, they don't have to wait, call down to the office, where's the account, the account gets set up, it doesn't get set up, it gets set up wrong, but it will be there, just use the account, and we'll manage the account just like, like we manage all other accounts. So, um, those kinds of things are the efficiencies, the, the, the way to allow us to focus clearly on finance that we're, we're doing. Um, so I've talked about, you know, removing the, the budget zeros, the inactive accounts, um, the multiple, you know, we have, we have lines for health insurance, dental insurance, uh, disability insurance, FICA, that like have, some of those lines have two people in it. It's, it's FICA for the facilities director, health insurance for the facilities director, you know, I've just never seen anything like that. It's accounting gone wild in my mind. And, you know, we know what salaries are, we sometimes do have to calculate it out for some particular reason, and we can do that, because we know the percentage, we know what the salary is, but we don't need to have a separate account line for all those individual kinds of things. So, uh, we're working to, to aggregate some of those, and basically, the, the report that you currently have, um, seen, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, is, it doesn't include grants, but it does include food service. And in talking to Andy today, and, you know, my recommendation would be that you, you get grant reports and food service report, but not part of that monthly budget, you would see those perhaps, you know, quarterly or twice a year, whatever you're looking for. You could always give somebody a, a detail or, you know, a look into that if you wanted to, uh, and we can leave it in the budget, but it really, they're separate, they're outside your normal appropriation. Um, so, those are the things, before I get into the little overhead of the thing on the television, I want to show you the little spreadsheet. But, I just want to share that, you know, we're, we're digging, we're working hard, we don't have all the answers, we haven't found all of the things that, you know, need to be readjusted, uh, and hopefully improved upon. We're here to make best practice, and best practice doesn't mean changing what already exists, because if what already exists is working and it's efficient and it's clear and simple, that is your best practice. But if there's a way to switch something around to make it better and smoother for those that come after us, you know, I think that would be smarter, and I think it would be better for the community as well, to be able to make more sense, more, I don't know how much, how many questions you get if you're delivered to a session, or how many people you get, or how many people come into the office and ask questions, but we want to try to make it easier and simpler for them to go. Um, so before I jump onto the little screen that I want to show you, a couple specific examples, I want to do two things, I want to show you a couple specific examples of how we're monitoring and managing, but then I also want to show you how you get to the number that you see at the bottom there, because it is confusing in New Hampshire. You all know this, it was sort of a, a new idea for me, is that your town is on a calendar year with your revenue, so your revenue never really finalizes, if I understand correctly, until December, you know, as to where things are going. However, your school system is on a fiscal year of July first to June thirtieth. So, you know, even having the revenue up, up top there and the, the expenditures down below, it's a little bit, you know, quirky for me. And then you also have, um, you know, where your articles play into your budget, and some go directly into a line, like your para, number your, the para salaries that were increased, and then others go in, but they're there for, they're like a holding place, and then you get reimbursed, so, you know, I'm going to try to show maybe a way of, so you know what, to explain to somebody how that bottom line number there, and how it may even change going into the future, because there are three articles that come to a total of seventy-five thousand dollars that are based on funding from the undesigned fund balance of FY25. Greg Colby is somebody you folks know, and I think he hired him, he's cleaning up and clearing out FY25, going to the end of the year report, we don't have that, that's not done yet. It would be helpful to know when it is done and get it done and get it finalized. But if in fact there is seventy-five thousand dollars, you would, you know, use that to fund those three articles. If there is not, I ask the question, what, what order do you go in? Do you pick and choose what you do? No, you go in the order that they were on the balance, things you already know, but things I had to get accustomed to. So, you've just got, um, it's not a clear cut thing that the budget is, you know, seventeen million dollars, and you get to spend that, and then it's over. It, there's some moving pieces, the way New Hampshire puts things together, which you have already recognized, but all that also makes it confusing, I think, sometimes for a public. Uh, and if you bring, you know, some, some finance people or what, together, the first problem they always have with public agencies is it's not profit and loss accounting, it's fund accounting. You have things in certain buckets, so that's, that's baffling, and that's why some folks that come in from the financial world into school or governmental accounting struggle, because they, they, they don't see where the buckets are, and, you know, how you use those buckets, when, when it comes from where it goes into. Um, so, like I said, we're trying to make it more streamlined, best practice, more easy of understanding. So, before I do that, I'll just stop, I can, you know, want, do you have any questions? If you want me just to go right to it?
Apologies for being late.
No problem. Good to meet you, Carol. Were you on the motorcycle I saw? All right. Let's see if I can get to this. All right, that's the beach that we're all going to.
Yeah.
Do you think we did this? Is this a screen that you know?
Yeah.
You might have to do this a little bit.
Maybe I do use, use this?
But, that's not going to even.
So, this is basically, I put what you receive onto Excel spreadsheet, and I just made this screen, that's revenue, right? As I said, I'm not sure how it all adjusts or changes, it's something new that I'm getting accustomed to. These are pretty clear, current appropriations, tuition for parents, that's where that comes in, I guess it finalizes as we get closer to December. However, the first two, I have questions marked against, but even this afternoon at five o'clock, five-thirty, I was getting closer, that I'm pretty sure these numbers are profit. Uh, it's seen as revenue, because it's money that comes out of payroll salaries that staff is paying for, for health insurance, for dental insurance, for life and disability, for, you know, any of the things that they have as benefits or earnings. So, it's seen as a revenue, it's encumbered, because we anticipate what it's going to be for the rest of the year, and you will see these, what, as payrolls come along, now that we're getting tuition payrolls, that will move a little bit quicker. I still have to confirm that, that's why I have a question marked against it, because I want to know specifically what is in this part and what is in this part. This NHRS correction, um, I think you've had questions about it, from what I've heard, I think we all may have some questions about it, but apparently it goes back from a couple years ago, and there was an overpayment and an underpayment, and apparently it involved, if I understand correctly, about sixty people, and the, the state retirement board is calculating these individuals one by one, I don't think they're seemingly moving very fast, but I don't know, you know, how fast that can be, they probably are struggling too, like every place, um, but there's, they're only at person number twenty-six, and those were the ones from a couple years ago, that if I understand, yeah, from stories I've heard, is that we, we have to pay them something for that. However, when we get to, like, the thirty through sixty, more of those are from the second year, and we should be receiving money back. So, the reason it's up here in revenue, and that, um, the reason it's up here in revenue is because they created this account, six thousand, which really doesn't have, you know, even, and you're going to see that number adjust. Actually, this was, you know, at six thousand, but we received some money, so, you know, we went down to forty-nine hundred. So, as we get hopefully to thirty, you're going to see more money coming in there. I don't know if we can expand it, I think it's probably from years past, most likely for the town, but you're going to see that adjust, and we will be monitoring that, and, you know, I'll keep you abreast as to what that is, you'll see it on the reports that you're receiving. As we get down further... As we get down further, and I want to show you three. You had a knee replacement, I had two. You can kneel when you have a knee.
That's good to know. Haven't gone there yet.
About five years later, I had both of them.
I gave your spreadsheet some stuff.
I'm going to stop moving. So here in time, I just want to show you three examples of the kinds of things we're digging deep and looking into. Then I sent out the report, used our athletics as, you know, we hope we're spending. Ooh, you know, and I worry about those things too. So as you look at that, this actually should not have been a 1420 account, which is, you know, athletic. It should have been a 2620 account. And it shouldn't have been in, you know, oh, one at all, it should have been in oh six. So whoever put the expenditure of your H3AC project into the budget, it went in at this point. We have to amend that, and we will. We will move it to the right account with a journal entry and get it appropriate, and you will then see the line for athletics be, that will move, it will move to this account, that will make your athletic line, the budget will be the same, you've only expended year to date, there's nothing encumbered, there's a balance of 35,000, you spent 19% of the budget. All right? So those are just one example of the kinds of things you're looking at. See if I can do this again. Second thing, you've seen legal services and school district bookkeeper slightly over, however, what you're looking at is the encumbrances have not been changed when you put in the year-to-date expenditure, that has not been the common practice. So when you lower the encumbrance, you're going to see those small 4%, 6% amounts change, and they'll be back in line to where they should be. The last thing I want to show you is that, you know, this was put in incorrectly, business financial service. I don't know whether this money represents us, or represents Greg Colby, or represents an audit, or whatever, but it should not have been in a line for 88,000, remember, we're at $16,000. And these happened in the rollover process during the summer. So these are the kinds of things we're trying to, you know, it's like peeling a whole bunch of strings apart and finding them all. And it should be down to, it should end up, it should be down in this line. Does this always do this? So it should be into this supervising fiscal services that has 148,000, encumbrance for 88,000, still need a budget balance for them, okay? So those are three, just the kinds of things we're doing to manage your budget, to make sure we stay aligned to the amount that you're given, okay? The last bottom piece is, I referred to it, I wanted to share with you. The budget right now comes to 17,719, okay? And your town-approved budget was 17,246, all right? Well, how do you get to 17,719? Well, first off, if you look up through here, I don't think it's on this, that does include food service, all right? So food service, I think, should be outside of your dis report, and you should see that quarterly, just like with grants. But it also includes the H3AC and the KIM. The H3AC amount was 325, and the KIM was 67,000. So you add that in. Those were those lines right at the bottom there. It also includes the paraprofessional salary that I shaded up top here. That number of $80,632 was put in to the special education salary line. So that's where that was. So that's just trying to show you, if you had to explain, somebody on the street or at the coffee shop says, "We only approved 17,246,000." What are you doing? You over-expending your budget? No, those are the reasons. And then, like I said a few minutes ago, if the FY '25 has an undesigned fund balance that can accommodate, you have three pending articles that would add to the budget another 75,000, so you would actually see that number go up again to 17,794. Now, of course, it would be lower if we took the food service out of there, okay? That's sort of what I've tried to share. Open to questions, open to any time, give a call, give an email, we'll try to help. Myself, I'm here, going to be here pretty much on Tuesdays, in another district on Mondays. Brian Hyde is working with me, is the second person for CMS. He may be here on Tuesdays, or he may be sometimes here on another day, depending on what we're doing and what we're trying to do together. So I'm open to any questions, I don't want to delay the review, and then trying to share the kinds of work that we're doing and how we want to make it as clear as possible for you to begin with, and then the community at large, and then certainly the school staff, who are not questioning numbers, wondering how we get a P.O., wondering how we do this or that. We want them to focus on instruction. That's the whole purpose. A business office should be anonymous excellence, behind the scenes, somehow the buses show up all on time, the heat's on, you get a hot lunch, you know, all the things are going as much as possible behind the scenes, because the school's product is working, and we want folk, people focused on. And in order to do that, you have to have a firm foundation, no different than in your home, or even in the school.
Any questions? I appreciate you breaking that out. Looks like you had spoken about the athletic total, and then just kind of, yeah, but I think that's a good sort of process, it was in those. Of course, I'm going to make this Tuesday, so I appreciate it. Yeah, those were the questions I had as well. Yeah.
We don't see them all at once, and as everything changes and we uncover something else, you know, there may be other little adjustments along the way that we'll explain, share, but, you know, we're here, we're taking care of it. It's September 3rd, we're going to get to June 30th, and we'll be okay. I've done it before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to head down the road, if you don't mind. Have a great rest of your meeting. I hope it's quick for you.
All right, so let's get back to, for the bills, and assess, so revenue count payable 1547, and a lot of 188,000, 184,000, and then you got to administrative press.
So I did say, I know what a great transition it's been back to school, beginning of summer and having the kids back, it's always wonderful to bring the energy. We have definitely hit the ground running in the student services department, sometimes there's a little bit of a lull on those meetings. There has not been a lull this year. My people had multiple meetings within the elementary school, as well as within the district, right off the bat. So in Nottingham School, interventionists and special educators have been working together, they are benchmarking, and then working on their schedules in terms of who's seeking what groups and those pieces. So that will be forthcoming this week, the finalizing those pieces. I also did update you on our grants. So our IDA grant for '25-'26 was written over the summer and submitted, it has been substantially approved at this point, which is good, when I broke this, it was still waiting approval. I noted out what goes into that grant, that we have part of our school psychologist services within the regular budget, but the majority of them are coming out of the IDA grant. Additionally, our DCEA, similarly, we have a small amount within our regular budget, and then a large sum that comes out of our grant. Also covers our ADA instructor and the occupational therapy assistant. I also did note that our allocation this year is $65,000 less than it has been in previous years. So that is a big amount that is different. So the way that the grants work, as you know, they roll over, so we're able to cover the pieces that were in there for this year with the rollover from last year, because grants run a year and a half. But that is going to be a conversation as we look at the grant allocation for next year, because with that $65,000 less, that is going to impact that rollover piece, so there's going to need to be some discussion about, you know, what services, you know, go into the regular budget, what services are most important in those pieces. So I did just note that over the summer, we spent a lot of time with those procedures, continuing to put some pieces in place, defining roles and responsibilities is a big one. We're going to be working on some, you know, job descriptions within the department, which started, but also, you know, as part of the new CDA carriers, we need to give them that job description with their contract and outline that responsibility. So that will be something that's forthcoming, as well as, we've talked a lot, and we've had a lot of conversation around some criteria around services, but that's something I'd really like to formalize this year, and begin to get some teacher input on how we're making those decisions. So even something as simple, preschool, right? How do we determine if a student has two days, or four days, or three days, or just services, as those numbers are increasing? We really need some quantifiable piece to explain, right? Where I don't think, we've had to have that so much in previous times, because we haven't had such high numbers of referrals. I just also like to note, we continue to have some openings, that library media physician is open, we have contracted two of the paraprofessions for behavior technicians, so that's been a way to utilize staff instead of, that's here for students, and then having the behavior techs work with some of our students with more comprehensive aides. So at that time, at this time, those physicians are slated for contract and services, however, they'll continue to be advertised, and they'll continue to interview us, qualified candidates applying. We have two students at charter schools, and we do have two students still in the Dover High Sat prep program. So those are two students, one who was at Cobra, who decided to go the route of High Sat, and a student that was at Dover that decided to go the route of High Sat. So in terms of preschool, they have, they started this week, which has been really wonderful and adorable, and you forget how little they are, you know? The open house was great this year, we did it a little bit differently, and had the open house during the regular K8 open house, you know, really trying to embrace that from K through eight model, and we had a huge amount of turnout, it was great, families that have been in years past came through, it was really positive, so that was great to see. And then I just, you know, like to note about the wait lists, but things do shift, and so I do encourage families to reach out, to be put on the waitlist, as families move in and out of town, sometimes we do have spots. And then we do continue to have spots for the special ed, if families have concerns. And then enrollment numbers are down below, they've changed since I even wrote this last week, so we'll, as students land in the fall as well, sometimes it will shift, so we'll update that for the next meeting.
On the alternative ed program, that's wondering.
No, it's Dover, alternative ed, yes, we don't have any students in the alternative ed right now. We work with Dover, has an adult program for the High Sat, which has been, it's a wonderful program, and they're extremely helpful, and they connect with families, and do a pre-test and outline tutoring, and that's not of a cost to our district, because we send students to Dover.
So we're not doing the old?
No, in extreme circumstances, we have an existing, you know, contract should be need, we have a relationship. If a student was looking to get a high school diploma in an alternative way, then the SAU44 has a program that they run, and, you know, that's something that we work out with a contract, but currently we don't have any students that have needed to pull that out.
I just saw the whole edit there, and I've.
It's been something in my time here, that kids had been in when I got here, and we've had, I think, like, one or two over the years, and that is of a cost, so I'd like to improve it, but most of the time, we've been able to, you know, work with Cobra or Dover, or students have opted for the High Sat.
Thank you. Right, on to the curriculum faculty's place.
So most of August, I centered my work on grant writing, updating online programming, inventory, and distributing literally three times of books, and also reviewing and approving some of the professional development work that staff submitted. But some of the highlights in August, on the 22nd, we had our new staff orientation. At the end of the day, new staff meet up with their mentors for the year, so that was a nicely good introduction, maybe to spend some time with them before school elections start. Fall testing is coming up, we have AINSWAD benchmarking has already started, we were able to start really early this year, thanks to our new rostering and using clever to update some of our systems, it happens a lot quicker, it's automatic overnight, so we don't have to keep entering new students by hand for the time we have somebody coming in or whatever, so it's nice. NEWA testing will take place in September and wrap up very, very early October, so we will be sending out information on that, I'll send a letter to families with the testing dates and the schedules coming up. For grants, this year's federal and state grant allocations were finalized, we have our Title I, our Title II, and our Title IV grants were all approved as part of that consolidated application. We received $18,348.47 for Title I so far, we will receive the rest of that grant later, we will also receive our rollover funds, but as I mentioned previously, it was less than we thought in previous years, and as we keep using that rollover, it's, you know, it is disappearing fast, so especially as we get less and less funds. For Title II, we received around, just over $4,500. In the past, since I've been here, we received $20,000 plus, so that's it, we're not getting more than that. So that was a big surprise, and especially when we were told in spring to expect global funding for Title II and Title IV. So because of that, our Title IV funds, which we did receive the same amount that we normally do, which was odd, we received $10,000, but I can roll that into Title II, so we will still be able to cover the professional development plans that we had, we had already set up for the year, so that's great. In addition, our RE grant, we have approximately $35,000 to support professional development, and we can also use that for some flexibility with unanticipated classroom needs or curriculum needs, things like that that come up. So altogether, all of those funds will continue to enable us to provide the supports that we would, even with reduced allocations in some areas. So that's all for grants, for our SASD update, like I previously mentioned, I'll be doing that update in October. The state still hasn't released their official statewide data, so as soon as that comes up, I can put that report together. The English program pilots are going well, I mean, they started, we've gotten all the materials, everybody's online, the teachers are able to access everything, we have the workbooks, the H3AC workbooks just came this week, so everything's here, they did a lot of work over the summer to learn the different programs and, you know, the various components that they could use, so they're really, you know, eager to get started with that, and hopefully we get some good feedback and have a really strong feeling about what we're going to manage to move forward with. And then finally, the, there's a little note on here, I know that I sent a note out to the community, I'm not sure if all of you got it, it's also on the website, but we did win one of the spots, the top five spot to the Fisher Katz reading challenge. So I was invited to a Fisher Katz game, and I went out on the field on the week before school started, I think it was August 27th, and I was given a check for the school and a plaque that's out in the hallway, and so that's been put in the student activities fund, and Ms. Roby will be able to purchase new books for the library with that, so that's great. And that's it.
What is the funding gap with the grants? I'm not, I'm just not following the math, like, how much less are we getting?
We got about $15,000 less for Title II, and the Title I. And the Title I, it was about fifteen thousand dollars less than what we got last year.
It's great that you're able to roll over and have other funds. I've heard about professional development.
It's, it's some work to do. To be able, you have to write them, but, but I want, I'll do it because I think it's important to continue to, to support that program.
Just to call a little bit on those grant reductions, is it just a different way of calculating? Or do we have a sense of how or why?
I have no idea on the Title II. I don't, I, they just, that's what we were allocated. And sometimes it's just that's, they got less at, at the state level and so they vote it out differently.
I know we were afraid REIT was the one we were worried about, but it looks like it's rolling steadily.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, that's the one from, from last year. So it's just sitting there and you can leave it, so.
The only other question I had, just kind of a really high level, roughly, how many ELA programs are you piloting? And are there certain things that you're looking for compared to the programming that we have, the curriculum?
Yeah, it's just two. It's the same two I talked about, it's, you know, the savas, the integrating into literature. And then we have, I mean, well, that's H M H. And then, so it's savas and H M H, the two programs. And they both span K to eight, which was, which is one of the, one of the main components we were looking at. We didn't want to pilot a bunch of different things that would piecemeal. We wanted to make sure that if we were going to pilot something, that it would, that spanned the entire grade level stretch. So that it would feel better to kids, they're able to keep transitioning programs, same language. And, and phonics support was really important, phonics progressions, to make sure that they matched up with what we use here, what the Common Core standards are. You know, and obviously, science of reading. Those really were some of the biggest pieces. There were some smaller, there were some other things, you know, we wanted to make sure there were, spelling was, was supported and, and just, and just writing. So there, you know, when we looked through all the different programs, which we got a lot of samples from all kinds of things. But we had meetings first to even decide what we were getting samples from and narrowed that down. So we narrowed it down and narrowed it down. And then we came up with these two that were piloting. And we did professional development over the summer, actual like training, like webinar, live webinars, where everybody attended. And went through the programs there and what all the pieces were. And then they, teachers came in and as part of their summer curriculum work, they did work as teams to work on what sections of, you know, the, the fall curriculum they wanted to use, the pilots of each, each programs, the units they wanted to do, everything. So they've really done a lot of work to make sure that it fits in with wonders. And they're still getting, you know, the students are still getting what they need. And it's not disrupting what they're doing in the classroom. But yet they're getting a really good feel of, for the programs and what they have to offer.
Thank you.
That brings us to collection discussion.
I just wanted to provide you an update. I reached out with the county minister. I was still playing home day, email day regarding non-presidential elections on the town side. I hope to have further updates by the eleventh seventeen. I wanted to keep you on the way that I could jump. It's really a performance moving out of school for the beauty gap.
Any questions about that? All right, CIT discussion.
So we had, we had another meeting. We talked briefly about changing that narrative sheet. And so Ellen White is working on that. She met with one of the CIT members last week, so we'll be seeing an adjustment there. I went through the schedule that you have seen. And because it's three years out, further than what we've done in the past, Mr. Corey and I will need to kind of sit down together and talk about a few things. But I took a quick look at some of the systems that we have that maybe right now we're not incorporating. Perhaps that's someplace where we could fall in for this longer period. We have the atom report that we had regarding I T and some of the project plans that they had that perhaps we can do something with. And then we also, and this is something that Mr. Hollage had mentioned, specific to the kitchen. But since again, we're going out into that the longer period, perhaps we could put a little bit of structure around that. And perhaps think about some of the kitchen pieces before some of those items. So those are the two areas I was thinking perhaps that aren't incorporated that we could talk about and see if that makes sense. And we decided today that we're going to meet again on the fifteenth. And at that time, we're going to be talking to the department heads from the town. And then the next meeting, I would assume we're going to be talking about more intensely or focused on the school district. So I think if we move forward, I have seen the schedule that everyone here has seen from the last meeting. Maybe we can push that out a little further and we meet again on the, I think, the day before there. We meet after them, so they're going to be on the fifteenth, we meet on the seventeenth. And so we can probably get, give you feedback and then plan on maybe for our next meeting, having a format. Does that seem reasonable?
I mean, two other pieces that Susan and I discussed. I got back to Mark Gilvin, the guy with the generator. And he thinks we should move that out quite a bit because we have not, and that's exciting. And the number of days that the school building is down from the power, not great, but at the same time, it's at the expense. He would rather see us look kind of, Susan was talking about phase three of our electrical panel, we're a three-phase system. And he thinks that would give us more bang for our buck and allow us to also be planning for the future in case there was some addition or something that happened. Because our electrical system is pretty much being close to being tapped out in the middle of the building. And then to Susan's point, there are definitely some things that we're talking about with food service, that, that kitchen. We're getting that on there. And I think the atom report is a nice piece to go. I think for what we're looking at for twenty twenty-six, that's kind of etched in stone. And I don't necessarily want to recommend it much more because we'll have a teacher's contract on the warrant. And that's probably the most critical thing that we'll have. So we'll probably be, again, following up with Mark Gilvin on the H M H repair, continuing that process. And then looking at our bond impact fees for the school building addition, deciding what do we specifically mean by that. So I would see it in maybe our next meeting and then maybe finalizing it in our program.
Amy, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean by the phase three electrical system. What does that mean, you'd be the generator?
The, the generator would give us the ability to run the school for those few days a year, maybe four or five. I can't imagine any more than that. They should get nice doors, they should get nice doors. The town is down, so you'd probably not have a school anymore. So we are a three-phase electric system, okay? And according to Mark, it's beyond my level of facilities. Our phase three could use some upgrading, which we got to the process. And he feels that's why at times we'll have power in one or two sections of the building go down and fill up. So I would need to bring back more specifics or advice into a meeting so that we could further clarify. But I don't see that coming until, it'll probably be in the twenty twenty-seven, replace the generator with something there.
Okay.
Trying to focus on the things.
All right, so that brings us to deliberations. And it looks like the next step we have, the audit engagement letter.
Last month in the packet, we had the engagement letter. And we're about to board time and degree, we're doing a lot of the time that lots of two. The thing that we'll be doing on audit, the audit will be scheduled over in December. I recommend after tracking this number, and I know Susan did a lot of videos into on this, that we move forward with this company. They're estimating our cost to be audit to be between nineteen and twenty-three thousand five hundred. I believe if I read correctly, government budgeted twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars. So I think we're in a good shape there. And once legacy project twenty twenty-five, then Paul and TMS will take over and staff preparing documents for the audit. So what we're looking for is a formal motion to accept the engagement letter. Say that I can sign it on behalf of Nathan. And Susan will do the governance questionnaire. And Melissa will sign as co-chair on governance signature.
That was going to be my only question, was about the governance inquiry form.
Yeah, so I have that pretty much filled out. There's, there's one question on here, rated, rated risks of fraud. And I think those are typically the things that, I think we have the same fraud risk as just about any other entity. It's around internal controls, it's around segregation of duties, things, things like that. In my opinion, and I would defer to the board and superintendent, from what I'm aware of, I don't think we have any higher, any risk here than, than anywhere else. But we're aware of our risks and I think that we do have policies. And I believe procedures are in place that are really going to become more robust as we go forward. So I think that's how I would answer that question. I'm not aware of any activities that are at arm's length, you know, with entities, you know. I'm not aware of anything of that nature, I'm thinking of areas. Not aware of any known fraud activities or anything. So that's the manner in which I've completed this. So it's just a couple. One that I want to think about a little bit more is an active role in the oversight of your processes for identifying and responding to progress. And I think that we identify the general things and we develop policies, particularly in the G area, D area. I know the policies that address a lot of that. I think that's really all that we're looking for. So that's where we go with that. If anyone concurs, if there's nothing else, I think we should be, we're still.
I think the promotion to accept the engagement letter and enter into the engagement with Bashan, Pupay and Company.
One second. So five zero, it was a motion by Candy, second by Janice, reset, please, on an engagement letter for Bashan, Pupay and Company. All right, next we have Sue Action Board will take regarding the board admin rules for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
In the board packet, I think it was two weeks ago, the board brought three things over. And I had kind of the board that I thought was well done, I was thinking that we could use that to kind of get us all on the same page. I think it was, but I'll say the same goal, I'll follow you the same direction, which is something we discussed earlier. So what I did is, beginning on page forty-five, I took the goals, I highlighted two different things. First, we go to have a discussion in history versus acceleration for something that we have in place for September of next year. So guys just want then want to put the board to, on the school culture, health and safety. We were looking to do a climate survey. They did the intensive, what I would recommend is in year one, to start with just the faculty. And then as we get used to the process, we would expand that to parents and eventually students. On the next page, page twenty-six, one of the things I added to prioritize improvement intentions, I created a competitive compensation package. Because if you are heading into negotiations and successful negotiations, we'll need a competitive compensation package. And that's really one of the biggest things the board does is balance what the taxpayers can afford and securing services with the best staff. So I wanted to make sure we put that in there. On the communication, the highlighted, the headline, I'd like to see the emergency management committee either be renamed or named in such a way that we pick up the function of the journey loss committee, which is required. I've been working on a number of pages already with Jeff and he has all the minutes and everything that goes into the safety committee. And they are really well done. And I think by doing that, we have all the same players at the table, but we don't have another committee. So I just think that we can overwhelm, especially trying to involve fire and police and, and people of that nature. So that is something that Jeff and I will be filing a report with the Department of Labor for October first on the journey loss management committee. And we'll just express to them, we're doing it under the umbrella of the emergency management committee. And how we'll involve that to meet all the requirements at the same time. And then on the facilities, I, that's the last sentence. It should say two, and then we need to work, insert the word enhance. The structural space is required necessary in the required programming. So it's that highlighted piece in the last, in the paragraph of facilities, the last sentence, and to enhance, and enhance is missing. And then one of the goals that we know we're looking at is to view and recommend enhanced on new instructional spaces to support talent and future programming and academic goals. And we're looking at intensive funding and study in twenty twenty-seven are doing something. So we can tell you that it seems like every day I get a new student moving in. So our numbers are not heading down. There's been inquiries from community members of people considering building and developing in the community. There's a lot of buzz going on. So those are the goals. The only pieces I did was assignment to specific management team members. And I would hold them responsible as part of their evaluation process to me. And then the board would hold me responsible, the overall goals to the board. As we all know, not every goal will be accomplished, but we've made promise to every goal and we'd be able to identify why something is stalled. Could we be using that funding? We're becoming something that we didn't expect, a host of reasons. But I think this will really give us an opportunity. And the board approves that tonight, I'll be discussing it next week with my administrative meeting with Jeff, Alan, Sarah and Catherine. And how do we take any questions with that?
One, it's around facilities. I just kind of have a little bit of a focus on that recently. And so I really like the goal that, that we have around making sure that the capital reserve accounts are properly funded to support. And I'm just wondering if, if maybe we need something or perhaps just a little more clarity around the notion that we're trying to not have any deferred maintenance, that we're, that we're trying to keep pace, which is difficult, I understand. But to keep pace with the needs of an aging building, is there room for that in here or is it, is it implied enough?
I, I think it's implied, but at the same time, I think it's, it's great because these are goals for people that aren't sitting here and discussing them all the time. So I can easily incorporate that because I think as we move forward, working with Scott and Amy Sretta and Mark Gilvin, we can start to kind of really identify areas of our building that need to go to CIT as well as that. But I think definitely, I'll make, I'll make a note and I'll clarify that. I think if the board can hold just kind of the overall premise with the addition of a clarified statement that I'll run by Susan, because she's been doing it so recently.
I'm fine with what you do, I really am. I think you understand what we're trying to achieve. I just want to make sure that the budget, because this year we have sort of, I think back in our background, back in our minds, we understand that maybe there are some things like the electrical system that perhaps took a second seat to age back. So I just think it would be good at this point to, we have a hundred and six floating through on one line in our budget right now. It's a little bit extra knowing that we have these, these issues, so maybe. So maybe just to fine tune that.
And I think, I would say that right now, a lot of the issues that we're facing are non-glamorous. You know, it's like, if you put in the new kitchen, everybody walks into your house, it's like, oh, I've got a new kitchen. You put into electrical, and you spend all that money and nobody can see. So we're doing a lot of the non-glamorous pieces behind the scenes. Whereas like, if we were to do the windows, you'd see I can, that's something everybody can see, you drive up, and oh, I noticed that. But there are a number of things like Susan's talking about, that deferred, that, and I'm not going, it's kind of like the heating system, the electric pipes and things like that. It has to be done, but it's not something that, like, we all get excited about.
Till it breaks.
It's all like, all the corners.
And then we also have those attic mound air handlers that we had placed into the budget, into the CIP, but then found out laterally, they can't be replaced without taking off the end of the school. So I don't know in my mind if we have specific numbers in there around planned fees, maintenance, to kind of rebuild as you go with those areas, or something else.
We'll look at that, like, as well, my relationship with Mark Gobin, if he's somebody that really can come in, kind of map it out for us.
I, I would move to accept the school board superintendent administrative goals, the updates to, to the goals.
One second. I have a question for the enrichment versus acceleration, I guess that's still kind of more of a question, unless this was discussed at the last meeting. Well, and also it says implement and enrichment program. And enrichment program, so is that what we're going with, is an enrichment program?
Well, we can go with either. The, the goal was to have this in spring of twenty-six, so we could open it with whatever program the board decided to on in the fall of twenty-six. So it could be enrichment, and it may be both, because it may be K to three enrichment, four and five different than even middle school.
Yep. Thank you.
Just one thing, just to surface things, you probably are already aware, but one of the areas that we've been concerned about, these are the ELA area around grade three and that, you know, third grade transition. And some of those scores have been soft for a fairly protracted period, even though we always do particularly well in those areas. So that's an area that I think everybody is trying to hold in.
I think this, I understand my philosophy on, on test items, I'm not a big test score person, because I think that loses sight of the child. And at grade three, if I'm three years and nine months, and you're two years and one month, but okay, it's a test, but that's a huge developmental piece. So as much as we will focus here and try to do some strategies that make attempts work there, I, I really like that, that benchmark at grade six before they're heading to middle school. Because we, you know, if there is a concern, that's when we absolutely need to catch that, and we think. So with seven to eight grade can be enhanced, and if we get opted over, a cop round would still be. So I mean, we'll definitely look at that, but I just, you know, the, the one size fits all, and who proficient who's not, on a, on a snapshot. We could, we could do a test right now for all six of us, and one of us may not do well based on everything that went on in our data. And we have more coping skills than their grades. So it's kind of like that balancing act for me. And I like to follow things like AIMS Web are those which track the child from the day we start to grow, because then I'll find out if this may be broken. If, if I'm way behind on my state assessment at, you know, the likelihood of me catching up totally in one grade is not really. But if you can see AIMS Corey at the beginning of grade three, but you're being at a second grade level, and finishes grade three almost on grade level, you're in AIMS Web, I'm more interested in that score, because it's about the individual child. And then the comparison is, you know, your third grade, we're not comparing third grade to this year, the third grade next year. It's not comparing third grades consistently in the same group. And there's always that piece where some groups happen to have more talents in them. As I used to say when I was at, in school, I might have been one of those athletic groups and not one of those academic groups. And there are other years that that fluctuates. But I think it's really, I look at the state assessments, and what it's saying, where are we with that criteria? You know, so I, I like to end up with all the child, I like the state assessment to say, look, we program, our math program would say. For, for four years now, we have seen the same problem of deficiency, and it's related to fractions, or it's related to word problems. Because that means you need to address a curriculum issue, because it didn't matter who went through, we all slept. Whereas the AIMS Web tells me more about how the individuals do. So we'll have a bunch of discussions in, about this hour, and I think she's on the same page. And we'll see what we do to against grade three, but at the same time, look at our program and see why. Is it, is it something specific that I struggled with at grade three?
I, I appreciate that, really, well, I mean, that's really fantastic to hear, and to know that, and regarding that, I've thought, we've some thoughts about that, so thank you.
Do you have a motion? Yes. So there's a motion with a second from Caroline to accept the board admin rules for twenty twenty-five and twenty-six with the changes, and the pending addition from Mr. Corey related to deferred maintenance. So the vote, all favor? That motion passes, five zero vote. All right, so now we're into policies. Looks like policy DGA was moved second read, the last name.
Policy DGA is, is mainly, in your folder, you have both updated copies. So basically the, in most cases, it's just the Nottingham, sort of like clean version. Which is, the changes discussed last week, ready to go. Does anyone have any questions?
So nothing different from here?
Secretary of Health, nothing different from last, but it is different from the one that we currently have.
Right, and nothing different from last week.
It's on the second line of the second paragraph.
That the board can, you can sign?
Oh, one off that.
Yep.
That's been added.
Other questions to policy DGA? Can make a motion to adopt the policy DGA?
And advanced? Adopt for last, I don't know how we do it.
Is it already adopted, so just revise?
So the revised, right? The second? All second? All was in favor? Danielle, you ready?
Yes, I was.
And then quick, I'll go right past the vote, five zero vote, okay. All right, policy EBD, school safety, was moved second read.
So this policy, it follows the sample that we had last week, which is the NHSBA proposed version. There's no, there's no, the NHSBA proposed version is, is just a, it's a list of other policies, more than anything else. So there's no deviations from that, other than making it our style. Am I remembering correctly?
So is it just their revised version that they updated, reflecting legal requirements from June twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, and the, and the changes were, well, we had two separate changes. The most recent changes were around some definitional items, it is a priority and required policy. And like, and mostly, as we've reviewed, it mostly refers to other policies, some of which we have here, and some of which we'll go to.
Any suggestions or, or policy EBD?
Make motion to adopt policy EBD, school safety as revised, I think.
All second. So I think these would show in the, in the, the policy handbook as adopted on twenty twenty-one and revised by the board.
Yeah.
All was in favor? All right, so that was a motion by Danielle, with a second, by Susan, to adopt as revised, policy EBD, school safety. All right, so policy EBD, school safety. And now the school one, like, so.
You feel like we've explained it to you a thousand times?
Yep.
I'm just, is this one in March or April, and then it had to be out there in June, because of what you said?
Okay. Any edits or suggestions for that one?
So for this one in our folder, we just had the sample policy to refer to?
Yeah, so I have to put on Nottingham. This one was used as an, we're not doing, we're not bringing any changes to it, if I recall, right?
And the one in the folder I was saying was the same as the one we have.
It was adopted in March, NHSBA needs some minor changes to this one.
Let's see what those changes were. I think it was just the definition in, power of ten, eleven, or an itemized list, going from memory, so I'll go home to it. Eleven is new, an itemized list on the second page. Oh no, that's in our, it's already in, yeah, no, that is new, because that's not in our, so in our pack, in our, original packet has the one we currently have online. So that.
So we want to.
So that's one change, and then there was, I believe, a definitional change, or a reference to a definitional change.
Yeah, they, they revised it to, to reflect the requirement embedded in the chemical hygiene plan template for annual audit.
And maybe it's just that, maybe it's just adding number eleven then. Oh no, it's probably in, in paragraph D, you see also, it says, the annual audit reports required them to be eleven above, so it's that reference also, this is the difference. So those are the two differences. Purely technical.
So that NHSBA version with that addition of number eleven, and then the reference in paragraph D.
So I make the motion to adopt policy EBD in the form of the proposed NHSBA sample. As put on, in the Nottingham, in the Nottingham format, though. If that makes sense, or I can fix it.
All second. And all was in favor? Okay, all right, so that motion passes, five zero vote. That was a motion by Candy, second by Danielle, to move to adopt the policy EBD in the form of the HSBA sample with a Nottingham format. All right, policy EBD. And that was just, I think, renamed, right? So everything stays the same, but it's just a renamed policy?
If you agree with it, it's by the propane tank and fueling of it, and we had used at the time, many years ago, ECA wasn't taken up by NHSBA and such equipment, and have used it. And it is now a policy that we need.
I thought we actually, I thought we actually did the motion last week on ECA, but.
He made a motion to change the existing policy ECA, it was referred by the board, renaming it to ECA, so that did, that did help ECA one.
Yeah, so we don't have to discuss that this time.
So propane tank operations is policy ECA one, that means we're all set for that, you're all set for that. All right, policy DBC, expense reimbursement, second read.
So in light of the presentation tonight, I think I need to revisit this one again, because I wasn't aware, we had a change of policy that we're not going to do expense reimbursement. So I think we should just table this one, I can discuss with Andy and Mr. Livingston, I'll see what he, what he's put up that's written. I had some concerns anyway with the, the item in our, our hand carry from last week. That was about the school financial accounting procedures. I had some concerns already, that I had flagged in there about conflicts potentially with our policies. So I was already, I was already going to bring that up. So I'm suggesting we just move on from that tonight, because I don't think we're ready for it.
All right, Caroline, this was your talk to Mr. JLIA, I'll be able to read it much better on this. All right, so.
So in the, in the folder for our policy, the policy JLIA has two components. This is the, the first page is the clean version, the second page is the redline version, just showing you the changes from the format proposed by the NHSBA. And the fourth purpose of the, the change was just to clarify, because we have so many activities that happen in the building that are not really school sponsored, we just allow them to happen in the school building that we do not have staff present for. So there's some ambiguity in it, and it probably wasn't really saying that we're responsible for it, but this hopefully removes all doubt that if it's not school sponsored, we're not responsible. So those are the, that's the change for our policy JLIA. I know, Jeff says, Jeff and I discussed this, I sent it to him and Susan, we kind of emailed about it, so he's in agreement. Yeah, so from my perspective, it's ready to go, because I think it needs a third read, that's fine, but I don't think it was pretty bad news of policy.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like a email about, you know, supervision of school buses. And, you know, supervision on school buses. Would this policy put us responsible for supervision on school buses to the school?
No, look at the second to last paragraph. It says our supervisory duties are just loading and unloading. I mean, I think it's, I think as a, as a matter of practice, I'm correct if I'm wrong, we do get involved if there's just planning issues that take place on the bus, but we don't have, it's not our, it's not our staff, it's not our employees, so, yeah. What's that? Right, and it's not, those aren't our employees, so we would.
I just want to make sure that, you know, that's not.
Our reports would be limited.
Less supervisors.
Yeah, right, that, we're not, yeah, high industry would be a whole other.
I don't often have questions.
So I would like to make a motion to accept policy JLIA for supervision of students. To adopt, sorry, to adopt policy JLIA, supervision of students as presented tonight in our packet.
All second. All was in favor? Vote five zero, so it's a motion by Candy, seconded by Caroline, to adopt as presented, policy J L I A, supervision of students. Vote five zero. And last will be, the first read cell phone policy.
So, I can speak to this one too. It's. Sorry, I want to see what we have in our packet, because I can't remember. So, I have, I only have one copy of a redline here. And, and speaking to Jeff, I wanted to make another revision. If I can circulate. Basically. The edits are just to, were conform, the proposals conformed to what. The Hampshire School Board Association is suggesting. That conforms with the requirements of the statute, that seems to be what other districts are doing. It's interesting, there's already a bunch of schools' policies posted on the state DOE website, but you can't find a copy of the revised statute yet, that's not posted yet by the government. You have to go digging a little bit more for that, but. Anyway, so it's really just cleaning up under, like, section B, cleaning up the, the highlighted notes, those don't need to be there anymore, because. We don't need to address those, I confirmed with Jeff that there's never a situation where we're asking students to. Use devices in the classroom and not providing them, so if students are going to be using. Electronic devices for academic work, they're always going to be provided by the district. So we don't need to adjust it for that, on page two. The consequences for violations, which is under section D, but I, I mean, I'm on page two for you guys, sorry, hold on. The, I edited to, so it just says pursuant to the student handbook, because that's what we call it. And then, our student handbook actually has three steps in our handbook. So, after confirming with Jeff, I'm just deleting the additionally, and then the one, first offense, and two, second and subsequent offenses. And just leaving it as violations will be pursued to the student handbook, that way if it, if we decide to, if. The school has the ability to modify the student handbook on the fly, if they feel they need to, we don't have to worry about having a policy that conflicts. Seems like it's a smoother way to go to me, so I can, I can circulate this. Which is my redline version. And this, which is my clean version, but I still have to cross out the discipline piece.
So with this policy, we want to move it to a second reading or additional changes?
So we have it in the agenda as. Yeah, I think we should adopt it, because we're really required to have it. Community member, or at least one has already asked about it, I think people are aware of it, we already, we sort of already announced it, anyway. I think I would just, you know, if there's anyone who's actually, who's listening and wants to address something in it, I would still encourage them to do so, we can always revisit it if. There's a community member who, who wants to discuss something with it, but I personally would like to get a policy in place, because we're required to have one. And then, we need to make adjustments with that.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adopt policy J I C J as. Revised from the Hampshire School Board Association's motion suggestions.
One second.
I was just looking here too, is like furthering the minutes, right, so it's circuit pivot and no offense, and you said the only change, Candy, was getting rid of those consequences, correct? Like the first, second, third offense type thing, and then referring just to the student handbook instead of as in the.
Do you have my redline version there? The redline version has all the. Also the record? Yeah, I, I hyphenated non-negotiable. Because it shouldn't be. My opinion. And then I, yeah, I made it to, so student handbook, I deleted the highlighted notes, because those were. Intended to highlight places where we might need to make edits, and then I. Erased the disciplinary consequences and referred to, just left it at the point where it referred to the student handbook.
Alright, so the motion to adopt was made by Caroline, Caroline seconded by Danielle, okay. All those in favor? Alright, motion passes, vote five zero. Alright, so committee reports. I know you guys had talked a lot at the last meeting about just the community ones that were coming in meetings, right, so I don't know if it's been out, but I'm glad.
Can you go to tech, Nick?
I can't, I'm just curious about that.
I'm going to tech if I have to.
Sorry.
Next Wednesday? Seven thirty eight.
September eleventh, there's a, a first budget meeting. I don't expect it to have. Too much, but then we'll just kind of adopt that schedule that you've seen.
On nine twenty nine, that is the N T A and School Board Quarterly Touchpoint Meeting, with Melissa and I at three p.m. Alright, is that it for committee? Do we know if the, the open committees, those space advisories, space advisory comms, and I think there was one more, the financial audit one, has that been posted internally for staff members?
Yes. I, Jeff was always, you were talking about that, for a couple homes for the community. Could I just ask if you have a community meeting coming up? Just email the posting to Lori, and to get that put up, so the community is aware of it.
For the finance committee. I don't know if they had, like, I think they had. No, but it did have, Lori Kilbride. Sent an email on that one, and I know we discussed it, but I don't know if the board formally accepted it or not.
Yeah, absolutely, that I can, I don't know if that.
Well, no, she had to volunteer to go as a committee, so does the board want to accept her or not?
Has that one also been posted internally?
Yes, but that one's not going to have staff. And we have a community member, Community Jesus Lori. We could have one more, I think we have one more, put a charter on that one, the space advisory stuff that we still need. I think, right.
We have one. Salt American.
She has, she has experience.
Alright.
And we'll create another, and, and stuff.
I'm taking a motion to accept Ms. Kilbride for the.
I move that we accept Lori Kilbride as a community member for the finance committee.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor? I move to make a motion for the space advisor.
Yeah, I move that we. Accept Kathy Brosnan for the space advisory as a community member.
Second? One second. Alright, all those in favor?
Because we've advertised for that since last year's open house, we were getting the, for that one. And we still have openings too on that one.
Alright, so that's our community updates, um, it's at the meeting minutes, so the new process kind of rolled out last time, how did everyone feel about that?
I hate it, I failed, I did send some edits, but I was late.
So we're supposed to do it the Thursday after the meeting?
No.
So should she send them in?
She, she sent us the draft, she's been 48 hours of that.
Yeah, the school board secretary has like five business days to do the minutes. And so she sent them to us, and then we, as a board, have 48 hours to offer her any suggestions for edits. So we review her draft on our own, and then let her know if we got any suggestions for edits. From there, she kind of adds those in, and then that's what Lori sends out to us, to be reviewed, yeah.
But no, but she, her email, her second email said no one sent them in, correct?
She did update myself, Caroline, and Lori that she did receive your edits.
Oh, well, they're not, they're not in here.
She did, because the packets probably were printed.
Yes.
Already.
They were, they were done on Thursday.
I do, it's right under. So, I was going to say, we can go over just the minutes, and then kind of pop in whatever suggestions that you have that might benefit.
I don't, I don't have anything new to add, I just. I didn't know that it, because I knew I was late, that was really what I was.
Yep, she did have one suggestion. The edits that you had suggested, she said were fine, she, the only thing that she said was the most. Oh, on the motion, she said, I double-checked in that, it's how the motion for policy D G A was warranted during the meeting, so that's why she had put it that way in the minutes. Yeah, if the motion needs to be restated at the next meeting, or correct in a different way, and she just referenced fifty four thirty as a timestamp for the recording. So the motion for D G A.
So how do we address that? Because obviously we meant to send it to the second reading, because it was already at first reading.
So with this, and I guess the latest now, and it does need future edits, do you remember your edits?
Yeah, I have, I have a copy in my phone.
They're right here.
Do you want me to say where they are, or, I don't know. Most of it's, most of it's minor and typographical, but the substantive one was that I had the policy D G A moved to a second reading. Which is what I thought we did, and what Susan thought we did. Because we talked about that. And, and. That's what we have on tonight's thing, so I'm not sure, we must, somebody, whoever, we must have just misspoken, and. We almost thought that's what we were doing, because. And then, under number thirteen, I was just saying that I, like. The agenda items were kind of addressed under, under twelve, so. It's not a big deal, it's, I don't know, I thought there should be at least a reference, because if someone was just looking for agenda items, they would think there was nothing there, when they're actually mentioned. An item twelve, and then the same for fourteen, I think that we need to say that we didn't have a non-public session, just for record, due to purposes. And the other things were just typo stuff, is not going to make a break in anything.
Yeah, I do have in my notes to the meeting, that the, it says. Motion to move D G A to first reading, so that probably was just a miss.
Someone just misspoken, or, maybe it was me.
Alright, so, I was going to say, let, let them out of all, correct.
Is D G A the, no, D G A is the one we. What's that? It's too bad that wasn't the expense reimbursement, in which case we could just ignore it, and it wouldn't matter, since we're abandoning it, but. My question is, does that cause a procedural issue, since we accepted that one tonight? Or is it not a big deal?
Can you accept the policy of the first reading?
Yeah, we just threw that, right, okay, good. If anyone has an issue, they can, let us know, we can revisit.
Yeah, alright, so just to kind of wrap this up, then. Process, old process, new process, I was going to say, what are everyone's kind of feelings on everything, I was going to connect to with the board secretary and kind of see how she felt on it.
Did you give her feedback, and then jump back?
See how it goes, like, one more week, I think, before we throw, how do you feel about that, Candy?
I, it's hard for me, you know, I mean, I just don't know what my schedule's going to be like, I try, I'm trying to leave, you know, the day before meetings. Open, so that I can do that, and then. It's just another chunk of time to try to allocate. And I just, my schedule changes week to week, but it shouldn't all be about me, but I am wondering how the secretary feels about it, because it just seems like it could be a lot more work to coordinate potentially feedback from five people.
Okay, so we'll check with her and just kind of get her feedback, and let you guys know if the.
She's been really wonderful.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, she was very open to trying something different, and we'll check with her.
I don't find, I don't find doing it at the table that laborious, especially like, that's a good example, like, I swore we moved it to second reading. I'd have to look at my notes to see what my notes say, but.
Yeah, one, two, I guess, kind of at least, like, for approving these minutes, do we wait to approve them to the next meeting, to include your edits, since the whole board doesn't have them, or do you just approve this with your edits?
Well, just do it the old-fashioned way, get them in, get them. Or do you?
Am I the only one that submitted anything?
I wasn't present, so I had no.
Oh, right.
Changes. I didn't, I'm not a typo catcher, so.
Come on, Susan, you're the only one hanging out here alone.
No, I, I hear what you're saying.
No, I'm saying, did you submit the edits, am I the only one? Oh, so I am the only one? Alright, so, I can just tell you my other.
Alright, let's do it.
So now we're back to, because I won the argument, I'm kidding, I don't really feel that way.
Because I do think people are looking for these, Mr. Livingston had mentioned, he was working it up, there's a line on it, just to put it up with those.
So, I don't have line numbers on this?
Yeah, page forty.
On the first page, I also don't have that, because it's on my phone, but Danielle Laflame, at least in our packet, there was no E on the end of Danielle. So I just took out the E under the, right under the nominations, and then in the motion. Unless there was a mistake in our. Packet. And then, under the T M S update. Third line, providing and operational and financial, oh, no. I see, that's a bad typo, so ignore that.
Providing and.
No, I think that's a bad typo, I can't read it. An opera, oh, I just made it huge, now I.
That's written out here on my, I'm going to review how they are working on developing this operational and financial practices for the district, providing.
Procedures, so, it's procedures, so, it can stay how it is. Oh, focusing is wrong, that's what, that's what my highlight is.
Providing operational and financial. Providing and operational and financial.
Going down from there, it's. Focusing is.
Oh, yeah, one S.
I, I have a line, we're sorry. Yeah, it's got two S's.
Anything else on my page?
I don't know what, I don't know if I'm, I can't see pages, especially because I tried to make it bigger, so I could see better. My other edit was on the first motion for policies, which we now know is wrong, so I don't know what we want to do about that edit, just ignore it.
I think we just kind of leave it as is, because I've seen it in the meeting minutes, so it's fine.
Um, under twelve, first sentence, I removed the that after agenda.
Yep.
Under thirteen, I just, I just added, see item twelve, and, but I, I left a comment because we weren't having a a discussion, but my discussion point was, as I said earlier, that if someone was just looking at the items, they might think that we didn't discuss the next agenda items, and we did, it's just mentioned in item twelve. And then, non-public session, I wrote none, and I left a comment again about, I think that we need to reflect that we didn't have a, a non-public session, if we have the place over there for the meeting minutes.
Okay, so in number twelve, I have that first sentence at the end, after the agenda, comma, get rid of the that, then in thirteen, I have it just in parentheses, written, see item twelve. And then, in number fourteen, under non-public session, just commenting that, none, so that the other committee is aware of that.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, my question to accept the meeting minutes as revised, the, I'm sorry, the school board meeting minutes from eight twenty twenty-five as revised.
Oh, I'll second it, sorry, there's only three of us to choose from.
All those in favor? All right. Votes are zero, we're ready, right, and then vote stay connected, all right. Perfect. All right, agenda building for the next meeting day.
I have the, the following, there's the M T S S presentation by Kathy Allen, the work that we got over the summer. We know, I'm looking at one, you guys need to be careful, please. We will do a, most likely a roll of the C I P, when Susan and I update that. We'll have a couple of community updates, we could be up some meetings this month. We will finish up the policies from, well, on this agenda that we're not adopted, and add any that Susan and Kerry need to fit. And we'll have our first kind of overview budget discussion, which will take a couple minutes. And then, we should have a follow-up, hopefully finalize what we're doing for elections. And then, if anything else comes up through any of the members, they can email the coaches, and I will also put a, myself, a discussion regarding the meeting as a follow-up with the board secretary.
I didn't hear the first item you said.
Uh, the M T S S behavior, what was that over the summer, Kathy Allen, we're gonna give you a fifteen twenty minute update to the board to understand what the teachers are looking at as far as moving forward with our behavioral issues issue.
Okay, great.
I need to ask the delegate or somebody, I know it's.
It's October fourth, I believe.
So, we need to go over to put our votes in.
They haven't even sent out the package yet.
I know, maybe we just got, we have just.
No, it says the board, they're sending out the full package later.
If it continues, we will add it to the.
It came in at three oh eight.
I'm hoping that this year, we can just take, you know, for the code of motions or consensus or whatever, just take some in groups, so we have the new ones that come in from other boards. We can talk about that, but like, the ones that are just continuing, we could just say, yep.
Oh, this is so arduous. Do you guys don't want the full package?
No, we do.
It says the full package documents and agenda will be shared in the coming weeks.
It's just that it can take about forty-five minutes if you make a motion on each one, even if it's way, and I'm just thinking, it's a continuing motion, a continuing, I lose my words, but you know what I mean, if it, it's something that's already been approved, and it needs to continue, I think they do it two, two years following, so we can just take, if there's six of those, instead of doing six separate ones, just take them all.
Did they change the date of it? Yeah.
What?
I'm scrolling down to the bottom of that email.
Oh, I can't go that day.
October twenty-fifth.
We have more time, Melissa.
But I can't, I cannot, I can't do that, dude, that's parents weekend at U N H.
You can't do it officially.
Twenty-fifth is parents weekend at U N H.
Okay, so look, we can figure it out after this meeting.
I, that's, scroll down all the way. That should be like in front of the center at the top of that.
It's been scheduled forever, like, why?
Okay. All right. Oh, thank you for that, yes, all right, I saw that. Oh, yeah, so the one, so, no, that's right, thank you. All right, uh, forty-five in the packet, um, non-public meeting minutes from August sixth. Any edits or revisions for that? All right, make a motion on those.
Um, make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from August sixth.
Second, all right, all those in favor? All right, motion passes, but zero, all right, thank you. All right, and then you guys nailed down, I think at the last meeting, the motion's added to the packet. All right, so we have a meeting for non-public tonight.
Why are you doing that? Mr. Lewis is asking a question, I think the meeting that I didn't attend on the sixth, you had a conversation about fifty-nine thousand dollars for the HVAC system cleaning, the, he just wanted to know if that was approved or not, so.
This is not.
It was not, so we can just give him that, I didn't have an answer. Thank you.
All right, so are we in under K for?
We are under K and C.
All right, so, K and C?
Yeah.
Um, I can go, I'm a motion to enter non-public under RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, two, C, and K.
All second. And we'll call him, I mean, yes, he's, yes, Vladimir?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, all right, so we are in non-public at the.
I think they just changed the date and stuff, where.
I don't think it was changed when I registered either, I'm, I'm positive.
I mean, it says right at the bottom of it in the highlight.
Am I just reading, or am I in there?
Uh, it's right there.